I call the February first, 2024 Finance Committee to order. We are going to take a five-minute pause and wait for Councilmember Nutting to arrive. Councilmember Nutting is stuck in traffic, so he is going to be late to the meeting.
I move to table the selection of the Chair and Vice Chair until the third Councilmember attends the committee.
Do you have a second?
All those in favor? I guess that's to be you.
All those in favor. So the selection of Chair and Vice Chair.
Is tabled?
Is tabled. We're going to move on to draft 2024.
Going to order, I'm just, just, I, is tabled the correct motion for this situation? I thought it was like. I was going to say, hold over till the next meeting.
Yeah. If. At the very next meeting, you can table it. And you don't have to make a motion.
Yeah, it's uncertain if he'll make it in time, so we'll table it.
Table it to the next meeting?
Yeah, I think everybody gets the point here that.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, we're going to move on to draft 2024 Finance Committee work plan.
So I guess that's me. So included in the packet is the draft 2024 Finance Committee work program. And this represents really just, I view it as kind of like a starting point. Those were my thoughts on how the committee could monitor the financial goings-on of the city. And also, there's included some items I think would catch the, would be appropriate to bring to the Finance Committee. And having said that, you know, of course, this was written up without input from council members on the committee. And so that's one of the things I thought we would discuss tonight is what the council members, you know, would like to see on the work plan as well, in addition to what we've already got as a, you know, like a starting point.
I'll go first. You know, I, we talked about this work plan, had a conversation about it. And in general, I think it's fine. A couple of things that I thought were relevant to add to the plan, and I don't think it takes any really additional work, is on the next meeting, the March 7th meeting, you have, you have the property tax levy lift, which is a form of revenue, so forth. I think there's a couple of other ones worth discussing and, you know, talking about. For instance, the property tax, the state legislature is just talking about raising it to two percent or three percent, and what that might mean for us if the county doesn't steal it, as we were talking about.
I think that's sales tax.
What's that? Oh, and sales tax. Yeah, and property tax with the three percent. Also, you know, we need to discuss things like, you know, as unpopular as they may be, maybe additional red light cameras, and there's several others, I think, that are out there as possibilities. But I think early in the season, talking about other forms of revenue and, you know, seeing what's potentially out there for the future as we look to 2025, 2026, et cetera. Other than that, I thought the rest of the reports were pretty good. I think as we go along, because this is a new committee, we may see some things in the second quarter or the second half of the year that are more beneficial, that we want to add.
Right.
But that's really what I saw there, and we're going to talk about biannual budgeting next, so I'll leave it alone.
And if, you know, if there's questions about anything on there as well. And also, I was thinking there probably should be a mechanism for like something that we're not thinking about right now that might pop up some issue or something. There should be like a way to bring that to committee, if they have time for that.
So, yeah, I don't want to jump into the biannual thing first, but I really would like to see, regardless of what we decide to do, that you're ready to go with something to get on the ballot, should we decide to have a lid lift.
Yeah, and that's.
And so I'd like to get a sense of like how much staff time or, you know, yeah, when do we, when is there a decision point before you just can't make it happen?
Right, so for the March meeting, when it's on there, and I'm planning to make, put a packet together that would include a timeline of when things would need to happen. If we were to get on the ballot, is my understanding at this point, that if we were going to get it on the ballot in August, for example, we'd need to have it filed with the county in May. So that's why it's on the agenda so early.
No, 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 I'm down, because we have to pre-sell this.
Right.
And so early is good, you know, should we, and the other thing is, I don't know how much bandwidth you have, but you've, you know, you've like, you know, flown the flag of being that data nerd kind of a person, and I mean that with the highest compliment. I would, you know, I think a lot of people would dearly like better data for, I hate that overused term, but how much bandwidth or is it possible for you to provide more drill-down, more detailed information on things like the Marina revenues? Yeah, I like, and I'm just using this as one example. How much work would it be to provide revenue based on like slip mix? Because we capture that stuff. It's a real decision in terms of, you know, just planning for the future. I mean, in other words, you could do a really lengthy market study, or you could just, if it was some easy to do, if you had a 10-year thing that said, well, here are the small boats, and here are the medium boats, and so on, and here's the occupancy. But I'm just throwing that out as a, because the people do pay every month, and it goes into a computer somewhere.
Right, so on the finance side, so the Marina has its own software system. We do have access to it.
Of course.
Yeah, and then we have that, well, I'm just. So, and then the accounting, there's the accounting piece, and so, like say for mortgage, we can present that in, on the finance side as a general number every month. So if we were to get more detailed, we'd have to work with the Marina staff and probably pull that data out. So that would be something I can look into.
Well, I guess that was my question, was how, how do they talk to one another? And, you know, and if they don't, then okay, but if they did, that would be pretty stellar, in my opinion.
Yeah, the, I would say, like I said, we have access to their system and knowledge of it, so if we needed more detail, we could probably go in and get it from their system. And that'd be a conversation I could have with one of my staff members.
I just want to be mindful of your time, but I'd also like to provide better information for, I just use that as one example, but you know, my dream has been a geographical sales tax report like they have in.
Right.
Polesbo and so on, and, but again, I see how many hours they spend doing that. But they only do it once a year, so I'm just, I'm trying to get a sense of what you have headroom for. And that's really all I got. I'm just glad that you've got a meeting scheduled every month, and that's it.
Except July. That's 4th of July.
Well, no, you, you know, everyone deserves a break. Yeah, you bet.
So I think the general purpose of this meeting, originally intent, is to focus on the general budget.
Right.
At this time. Other, other like enterprise funds and et cetera. I think it's something we can look at in the future, but not necessary today. I think, I think we need to focus on that. Maybe later in the second half, we might explore some of those possibilities if we need to. But as far as I know, they, they break even or make money right now. It's not such an issue. I think it's making, ensuring we have the reserve. As far as the, as far as revenue structures, like taxing different districts of the town, love to put that on the March district, because I've done my research, and Polesball and us, I don't necessarily think are the same. So I think that's a good add, because that could be part of the revenue discussion that I think we need to get there. But I think we need to focus more on the general budget, especially for the first six months, if not the first nine.
Yeah, regarding like replacement vehicles, that's another thing. It would be really, again, this is just similar to the Marina thing. Typically, you know, the council is, is, the police will bring forward a, some sort of item, like we need three vehicles and so on. I think it would be pretty nice if we had some kind of ongoing sense of like, here's how much we're spending every year on vehicles and on the bat utility belts and all the other doodads, just so we can see this stuff coming. I often have the feeling that, hey, we need new, three new cars. And I'm like, nobody wants to be that guy, but it would be super swell to sort of be able to anticipate this or have some historical. And again, I don't know how the systems talk to one another.
Right, I think on that topic, and the reason that it's on there is that's an issue we're working on primarily, well, for different reasons. One is that's an issue where it's not just finance, that's finance, that's public works, that's police, and we all three have to work together. And we fund the purchase of the vehicles. And during the pandemic, one of the strategies financially to get through the pandemic was not to send the money that's set aside for vehicles to that fund. And so now that got to the pandemic, and now we have financial challenges, and we, we need to fund the replacements. And we don't necessarily have the money to do that. And so we're looking at getting all three parties on board and getting a strategy of how, how are we going to replace vehicles?
Yeah, no, please, please don't misunderstand me. You're kind of getting to the solution, and I just want the historical.
Right.
Data, you know, just, just to understand, like, ongoing, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars a year does it take for these things? Because they're surprisingly expensive. Okay, that's it.
I think one thing we need to remember here is that the city manager and the finance director provide us a recommended budget. These meetings have purposes to look at options and opportunities that they can explore and bring forward to us in combination for that. We need to keep, I think, it simpler than, than, and less in the weeds. If we get in the weeds, we're going to be problematic, and we're going to get nowhere. So I just, I would ask that we continue to do that.
Does dead air indicate that we should move on?
Is that the, is that the end of the work plan?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to.
Either of us have any more to say about the work plan?
Does anybody else have any more, anything more to say? We'll move on to the biannual budget.
So for historical context, on this one, the city, as is mentioned in the packet on this item, is currently, follows an annual budgeting process, so we budget one year at a time. So we go through the budget throughout the year. Next year comes, and we do it all over again. There are two ways that you're, the state of Washington allows cities to budget. One is that annual process, and then the second is you, is biannual budgeting, which allows you to budget two years at a time. When you do biannual budgeting, the first year must be an odd-numbered year. So 2025 to 2026 would be a biennium. And if you were to change from annual budgeting to biannual budgeting, you would need to do that in the year before the biennium and do it by June 30th. And in the packet I've included, it also has, I list the advantages and disadvantages of biannual budgeting. And I think the first two are really key for where the city is at right now, and the financial challenges that we have, which is it encourages a long-term planning focus over multiple years, instead of just balancing the budget for a single year. So I think that that's one way that can strengthen the city's focus, is to not just look at everything one year at a time, think, okay, we're okay, and then not really think past that. And I think that's, you know, good for council, that's good for staff, to look, have a more long-term focus. And then also, reducing the total amount of time spent budgeting over a two-year period. So there's efficiencies built into the biennial budgets. We would, you work during a budget year, you're going to work hard, probably a little bit more during two years, and then the following year, you don't have to go through the entire budget process. And that's efficiencies, that's citywide, that's every department doesn't have to spend as much time budgeting. As part of the biennial budgeting process, and according to state law, you are required to review it. So it would be something that we have a period of time where we're required to review, required to update. And then we would still do budget amendments in that second year. So we're always still managing the budget, but we're not every year creating a new budget from scratch, and then the next year, creating a new budget from scratch, and then having all city departments participate in this big, you know, process. So that's why it's on this, the agenda, because I do think it's kind of a foundational piece that we could, if it was to be adopted by council, that it would probably benefit the city to a great degree. So that's, that's why it's on here. If this was voted on next month to go to council for discussion, that timing is fine. I'm excited just to actually be able to, to bring it to the Finance Committee and bring it up for discussion. And I can, happy to answer any questions.
I'm super cool with this. Full disclosure, I've made my feeling known that it should, we should not make a decision on this until next month, simply because it is a momentous thing, and especially with Councilmember Nutting here, big things, we should just, you know, give it a month to think about the things I haven't had a chance to think about. But that said, our sister cities do it, and they're, seem to be perfectly happy. And I truly dislike all of the all-hands-on-deck junk that seems to happen every, basically, half the year. But my only question, I guess, is, does this have any implica, implica, implications for state auditors? Do they still look at us every year, or is that also?
Yes, they, they would audit us every year. They would look at our budget to actual every year. They'd look at the budget process, the same as they always do.
Okay.
So there's no difference.
That's all I got.
I also am supportive of the biannual budget. It's something that I've been talking about for the last six years, actually. So I, I see there's some challenges there, but I think it, it worked for us. I look at the ability for us to especially plan and ensure our reserve is protected, not only next year, but the year after, and kind of lock and agree on that as a council. You know, as far as waiting and rehashing it out on March 7th, with Councilmember Nutting's here is fine, but I would say that shortly thereafter that meeting, and I don't know that, obviously, we need to, we could pass this by June, but I'm sure the sooner we approve it, the sooner that you guys can get started on a biannual, biannual process rather than a annual, right?
Yeah, if it was, went to council in March, and let's say it was approved, then at least when I'm planning the budget process, I know what I'm planning for.
So if we talked on the March 7th meeting and, and recommended it come before council, would it need two readings?
No, I verified that with Matt Hutchins.
Okay, and it, we could get it on the agenda, I guess, if, if, if we moved it forward on the March 7th meeting.
Yeah.
Later in March, if need be, that's a doable thing? Then I have no problem waiting till, you know, the March 7th meeting to refer it to council.
Okay.
So we can all think about it and discuss it and so forth, and give the public some opportunity to weigh in as well.
Okay.
I didn't have anything.
Yeah.
Did you either?
No, that's actually, I mean, the only thing is just because, you know, there will, there'll be a couple of people who will see this as like less oversight. And I'm like, no, actually, it's going to be, you know, it's, there's no difference. So I just, you know, want to have just a little bit of time to sell this a bit, and that's really all. But again, yeah, I'm completely supportive.
So the only thing else is, I'd like to, with Councilmember Harris's permission, give a public opportunity to speak at the council committee meeting.
Sure thing.
So I turn it over to our temporary chair to recognize anybody that wants to speak.
Does anybody want to speak? State your name and city you live in for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Chuck Coleman, 28406 Redondo Beach Drive South in Des Moines. When I got this item on the agenda, I started thinking about it. And I'd like for you guys to think about this from the public perspective. The optics on this are pretty bad. The reason I say that is, in the Citizens Advisory Committee that started a year ago, we did a major survey of the, all of our citizens that, in all different, nine different districts. And the goal was to find out, okay, what do the citizens in these nine districts want from the city government? One of the most important ones was transparency. And I just believe that the optics on this, by putting it into a two-year period, is not going to be good for the citizens. Besides that, I don't know of any Fortune 500 company that does this. I know Fortune 500 companies that do it every six months, not every year, especially with the economy the way it is, and especially the fact that we were told not that long ago that the city's had it for a $2.5 million deficit. Now, 2.5 million divided by the number of citizens that we have in this city are about $2,000 per rooftop. So how do you, I mean, think about this. How are the citizens going to react to this? This bad news we know is coming, and it sounds like you're going to be burying it for another two years. The iceberg will always have been hit by then. It'll be too late. Just my opinion, okay? It's from the citizen's perspective. Think about that, please, because it, it doesn't sound good. I understand what you're doing, but it doesn't sound right, given where we are today. If the budget, if the long-term budget was wonderful, revenues, great, no problem. Just doesn't, doesn't smell right. That's all I have.
Does.
With that, I, I don't think we have anything, so I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.
I guess we'll just put selection first, first item next, next agenda.
Yeah. I was like, oh my gosh, I didn't have a whole script or anything.
You're ready for the big timeout.